Board, does anybody else have anything else they would like to add? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the consented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Moving on to public forum, public forum is limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone here in the public for public forum to speak on public forum? Would you like to do this now? Okay, I have a letter here from a resident and I'm going to read it. And then we can discuss it a little bit there, okay? I'm writing to express a serious concern on behalf of myself and neighboring small businesses owners regarding the ongoing infrastructure project affecting the Fair City addition area. Our businesses, family-owned, taxpaying, community-rooted operations are facing growing financial and mental strain due to the disruptions caused by this project. What is most disheartening, however, is not just the physical inconvenience, but the lack of clear proactive communication and meaningful support from entities we would expect to be engaged, namely the city of Huron, Greater Huron Development Corporation, and the Huron Chamber of Commerce. We are not asking for handouts, we are asking for awareness, consideration, and collaboration. Transparency about the scope of the project, expected timelines, mitigation efforts, and consistent updates would go a long way. Instead, many of us have been left in the dark reacting to road closures, dust issues, and access limitations with no advance warning or support. We've requested basic mitigations such as the installation of-
It sounds like you've encountered some frustrating limitations.
A few, but I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet. We've requested basic mitigations such as the installation of a milled blacktop combo mix for a temporary road to preserve customer access and reduce dust. This is not a major ask when weighed against the total scale of the project, yet we've had to push just to have the conversation. As small business striving to build and maintain a future in Huron, we deserve better. We want to stay open, we want to contribute, but we cannot do it alone, and we certainly cannot do it without the communication from the very entities meant to support us. I respectfully urge you to take this matter seriously, not only to help resolve our immediate changes, but to improve how projects of this magnitude are handled going forward. Sincerely, Jennifer E. Hofer. Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add or say in addition? I mean, we all have a copy of the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you guys been driving to the Fair City grocery at any point?
I don't know about these guys, but personally, I personally I have because-
How had you gotten there the last two weeks?
I stopped at Jensen Feed and Fair City both, so I went right through from Fair, from Jensen Feed to Fair City. Came down Dakota Avenue.
Dakota Avenue?
From Carlson's.
Okay.
That's how I get there, I guess.
And that has always been open for you?
Whenever I've tried to.
Okay. Right now, the city has it directed right through private property and the state. These are my family businesses, my neighbors, my friends. No consideration, no, nothing was aware to me, a taxpayer, or my family. It was very heartening. I went and talked to my neighbors today. Due to the excessive dust and stuff, Jay and his family has lost three compressors on their cooling units. Nothing has been done for us. Why is that?
Honestly, I'm not, we're not gonna throw anybody under the bus here, but is, in the first place, it's not our project to manage, we, it's not our project to run. We try and manage it the best we can, but it's not our project to run. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, I'm just saying it's not our project to run, but we want to manage it as much as we can. Let me ask you this, do you have suggestions? Except for the, the, the road, the-
Yes, gravel and some, something put through so people, they're driving through my property. They're driving all through it, through our family fights. And if we would shut that down, that would take out three other family businesses. That's not what I want. That's not what I, I want some compensation and I want some help.
And we, we want nobody-
And as I was sitting in my lot the last two days, your police department drove through four times. There's designated zones, your police department isn't using the detours. They are driving through my property, which is not a designated zone, what I kept hearing all day today. Would you like the photos?
And they may have been driving through there because they've been asked to by someone.
Not by me.
No, no, I, I get that, not by you.
It's not a designated zone.
I know, but if there was, if there were ongoing problems in a designated zone, they would still be called and asked to look, to watch that. I'm just, I, I don't know if that's the case, I'm just saying that could be the case, but don't know.
A two-week project is now going on board.
The what?
A two-week project, a closure, is going on board. You still cannot get all the way through Huron on Dakota.
No.
We were guaranteed that not to happen.
I don't know about the guarantee, I know the suggestion was, but I don't know about the guarantee, I seriously don't.
We knew we were lied to when we heard that statement.
Well, I don't think anybody was lied to, but in remodeling, there's always-
Correct.
There's always stuff that happens, and there's some stuff that happened, but again, I, I don't have the answers.
All I've heard, all I've heard all day long, it's not mine, it's not me. When is someone gonna stand up and help us, the community of Huron? When there's a fire, when there is children's accidents, as a community, we always rally through and help each other out. I am here now asking the city of Huron to help us out, a family of four, to buy businesses, which have numerous family members and generations involved.
Good.
For the longevity of our community.
Well, the longevity part of it is gonna be there, Jen, the longevity is gonna be there with this great, with this new road.
That's why I wasn't here right away.
But the current, the, the immediate, we will have to discuss that and-
Please.
We will.
And please make some preventions and stuff for project going further in different parts of the community, not just mine.
No, no, you're right.
We did a lot of catch-up, I feel, on this project, not a lot of foresight.
I, it's unfortunate, I, I understand that, and, and I'm not a business there, so I can't say that, but I'm, I'm not saying that nobody has thought about that. I'm not, I will promise you that, there's been a lot of thought and conversation, and there will be more, there will be more. And hopefully, we can take some action, some, of some kind. Okay, we will try.
Thank you.
You bet.
Have a good evening.
Okay, you too, thanks.
Good sharing.
Anybody else have?
To move on, Mary, do we know, to like, the closure in front of Napa, is there, what is the state's directed detour?
That is a closed through traffic road right now. We, no one is directing the traffic through her lot. I am sure there is traffic through it, and not, can, not at all.
Right. Lots of it, but-
We as a city could put barricades up there to stop it.
But the state, the state's detour plan for that is still to go out to Lincoln or to go down?
Yep, absolutely.
They don't want anybody, there is no, there is no detour route to travel through there?
Nope.
That was what I thought as well, I wasn't sure, but thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, I, it's-
Because I would say that is a, that I could see would be a little confusing, because when you come, they still have the signage up at Highway fourteen that directs you into one lane, but then immediately after that, there's a road closed sign. So I think probably people, you know, it would almost be better if it was closed further back, or, you know, then that blocks Carlson's off.
Yeah, so there isn't a good detour in this area because we're landlocked.
From there to Market Road, there's not.
No matter where we put that sign, we're cutting off a business or something, right?
Correct.
Because you can't get to Third Street, can you?
No.
No.
Then there's the issue of the train stopping at that intersection between seven and eight.
Yep. There is one guaranteed rather than right now, and that's Jersey Avenue.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you're assured.
Going over the drain.
Yeah, it's, it, it's a, it's a problem that we were all discussing two years ago, and then last year it happened, and this year it's happening, and next year it's gonna happen again, and, but we can't, you can't build a scenario for everything. But, but it's stuff that you have to take into consideration.
Hopefully, once this segment of construction is done, it will not be closed at all through town after this.
It's, it's the worst area right now.
And this was the worst fear that we're, we're hit with right now.
Correct.
Any, any other stretch, there's always, you can go one block over and get a route. This is the, this is the one spot.
After this, we'll have two lanes, one going each way, unobstructed for the rest of the project.
And there was other access to businesses before also.
Correct.
So, yeah, it, it's the worst stretch, there is no doubt about it, and, yeah.
How far out is that project from being accessible, at least back to the railroad tracks from the, from the north?
We have progress meeting at DOT tomorrow, but we're paving, so I don't know if I'm gonna get there. And that's gonna be a DOT scheduling, I would have to talk to them.
Did you hear that, Brian?
Uh, tomorrow, there's a, a meeting to discuss that, is that what I'm gathering?
Yes, it is, yes.
When they posted that, what, what, what was there posted? Because they did do a notification when they announced that the railroad tracks were open. They did put a date on that part at that time.
Don't remember what it was.
I, I wanna say it was another, I thought, I thought they listed it as another week plus, I mean, it's definitely-
It was, it was supposed to be two weeks that the railroad tracks themselves, there could have been other work outside of that, but the railroad track project right there was supposed to be a two-week project. And then, moving to Second Street, the work that's being done right now was listed as another two weeks.
If I remember that, because I had to reword that like three different times, because it didn't make sense when it said it.
Yeah.
Do we know, I, you know, we didn't ask her, but do we know who she talked to?
Um, I did not ask her that, no.
She has not told me.
Without being there, I did go to Carlson's Sunday morning, and I understand the fight that, that is present there, because, uh, basically, you're, you're turning left just on the south side of Carlson's and rerouting back on Highway fourteen to get around. And I, I assume what Ms. Hofer was talking about is that gravel road that would lead to Fair City, uh, that adjoins their, their storage unit.
It's actually, that's, that's private, they're, they're private property.
Jen's property.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I'm kinda reading into it, I admittedly, but I assume what she's saying is they're using that as the thoroughfare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Fair City.
Correct.
They're coming out, they're using Fair City's parking lot, I, I imagine, and driving from the railroad, or the Fair City entrance, all the way across her property up to Third Street and out.
Yeah, and I've been up there a couple times, and she's right, it is, there's, there is a considerable amount of traffic going on that gravel in between her storage units, and that is, there is a large number of vehicles that are here.
Probably going through there way faster.
Because of the layout of the streets to Fair City, as well as this being a private drive, I, I, I would anticipate they, along with Fair City owners, have some merit in, um, basically, through this project, which has to happen, has basically closed out their business for, for an undetermined amount of time, because there's no public access to it, other than through that private drive to Fair City.
Can't you get in through Napa, the back door?
No.
Fair City, you can't, but you can get into, you can get into Napa, you can get into Carlson's, you can get into, you can get into Jensen Feed, you can get into-
Jensen Feed, to me, you'd have to, to get to Jensen, you'd have to go from the south, come over the railroad tracks to get to it, and Fair City. To get to Carlson's, you'd have to come from the north and go around behind on the paved roads by Carlson's.
And that's how you get to Jensen's also, he's got that parking lot there, north of his building, but-
I could be, update the alerts from the department, highway department, Department of Transportation, and on Friday, they sent one saying that Highway thirty-seven Dakota will be closed from Third Street North to south of Second Street North for approximately two weeks.
Okay.
That was as of Friday.
Friday.
It's their text message, those are really good, too, they send those out quite often.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's on the website?
In that, in that line of thought with, because of the state DOT project, is there any, uh, any compensation clauses in that? Because, you know, again, you're going through a, a private drive, which is a business that has been cut off, not only for the businesses that are cut off, but as well as the person that owns the drive.
They haven't, they haven't directed any traffic there, legally, they haven't directed any traffic there, and there's, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think there's one business and a church that is not accessible, period.
They'll be accessible from the road.
Fair City, I guess you can come around, okay, from the south, from the south, okay.
And, you know, there was no compensation for businesses downtown.
No, yeah.
So.
To, to answer your point, there's compensation, I, I would highly doubt that, Brian, but-
Can you, you can't access, you can't access Fair City from the south?
You can now.
Yeah, the railroad, the railroad crossing is open in two lanes, they, it's, it's not completely open, but it is passable from Market Street up to Fair City now.
Up to Fair City.
Okay, thank you, I, I wasn't aware of that part.
Yeah, yeah.
The concern I would have with gravel-
I think that was last Friday is all.
As, as she suggests is, you know, if we were to go put gravel in her lot, aren't we then encouraging more people to go through there? You know, if we're saying right now, we, we don't want people to drive there, is it worse to, to try to go in and, you know, once we put that there, then everyone's gonna say, well, that's where I'm supposed to drive, look, they put gravel there.
Correct.
So I'm not sure, but I, I certainly respect were for her, because of where those road closed signs are, most average drivers are not gonna say, whoops, turn around, go back, and then go out and around, they just figure out a way to get through.
It almost needs to be barricaded off.
Yeah.
That's what it really means.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that private access has been used as an access point to Fair City from the north for years.
Yeah. It still is, there's just more of it now.
Well, yeah, I, I guess what I would think would be prudent would be to go back to Ms. Hofer and make a determination, do you want us to, do you want us to barricade it off then?
So would it be us or the state, though?
The state would, we would have to ask the state if they would do it, I suppose.
Well, I, either the state or us, but, uh, the point is valid, in fact that- What's understood to be a private or a public access is actually a private access point.
But I don't know that a load of gravel is gonna be a lot less dusty, you know, we can do, we can do the crushed concrete, but, you know.
But yeah, there again, then you're encouraging the traffic.
Exactly.
So we should ask what she prefers.
Well, yeah, that's, that's my point, or to try to make a determination of whether they want to encourage, the way it's been used in the past, or shut it off until the, the road opens back up, I, you know.
I think-
I guess that'd be my, my perception of it.
I think first, let's do this, let's see if someone can go to that progress meeting tomorrow, Dennis? Someone, and see what their indication is, if they have, I mean, I know things, it's remodeling, I know things have tendency to change, but let's see what their timeline seems to be right now. And then, if you could get back with, if you or someone, whoever goes there, could get back with me on that, and I'll visit with Ms. Hofer again and see if she has a preference, and I make no promises, how's that?
Okay.
Okay, you all right with that, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we're in the consensus then. All right, anybody else have anything for public forum?
I have just a couple of quick announcements.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Public Library wanted me to announce that they are having an information session tomorrow. They're going to have one at noon and one at three o'clock, serving refreshments. And you can come ask any questions or find out information about how to reach a book, how to find a book, things that they'll be answering. The other thing I wanted to do is mention that the school nutrition department is looking for volunteer groups to help with the distribution of summer school lunches. It starts May twenty-seventh, it's Tuesday and Friday, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty is the distribution. If you could come a little early and stick around for late arrivals. And they only need four people each time, and I would love to see our city commissioners take that first week and help out with that project.
And that's each day, every day?
Just Tuesday and Friday each week.
Tuesdays and Fridays, Tuesdays and Fridays. Okay.
Until August first.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that info. Moving on to the consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. Tonight, our consent agenda consists of four point one minutes of May fifth, twenty-twenty-five, four point two fuel quotes for city departments, four point three personnel items. Number one, volunteer firefighter Rusty Topol completed the South Dakota Certified Firefighter Course and is, his probationary period effective May fifth of twenty-twenty-five. Number two, accept the termination of the city attorney contract with David Wheeler, effective May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And number three, seasonal hiring for Memorial Pro Shop, Parks and Recreation, and Splash Central Water Park. Four point four, consider request by Police Chief Derek Layer to apply for grant funding for Shop With A Cop event taking place in December, and authorize Police Chief Layer and Finance Director Pauline Carey to sign. Four point five, consider parade permit request by Jason Bechtel for the annual law enforcement torch run Special Olympics for May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Four point six, consider parade permit request by Dennis Schilling for June thirteenth for the Huron Area Antique Power Association. Four point seven, consider approval of Darrell Raschke and Jeff Burns to serve additional four-year term on Lake and Riverfront Committee. Four point eight, consider approval for Jessica Hotchkiss and Tom Bratner to serve an additional four-year term on the Community Improvement Committee. And four point nine, consider approval for Drew Weinreich to fulfill the remainder of an open committee position on the Community Improvement Committee with the term expiring June one, twenty-twenty-seven. And four point ten, payment of the bills. And four point eleven is, uh, appoint Ju, Jan Johnson to the Historic Board of Preservation, and I'm looking for her term.
It's a three-year term.
A three-year term, okay, yes.
Move to approve consent.
Approve, confirm.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Moving on to bid quote items, consider approval of bid twenty-twenty-five dash nine Q, asphalt emulsion award to the lowest bidder Jeb, Jebro Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Assistant Engineer Dennis Bennett, please.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, this is for the road oil we use for the crack chip ceiling projects, and recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Five point two, consider payment request number ten from BX Civil and Construction Incorporated for Dakota Avenue improvements, bid number twenty-four oh one dash oh one in the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand and sixty dollars and thirty cents, again.
This is progress pu, payment, and we recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second, okay, Dennis, I would just like to add a little bit to this, uh, the starting of tonight's public forum and this together. Is there a way we could get, um, just an update, um, from the engineer's office, what you get from them, so we can relay it to the public? On, I, I don't know, is once a week too often, or not?
I guess on the realities, but we have a progress meeting weekly with them, and BX Civil gives us the meeting minutes.
Oh.
That was-
So are those every Tuesday morning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we had, it'd be old news by next Monday, I guess, but, um, maybe old news is better than no news, I don't know, I guess, just a thought, just because, and I, and, again, it went on last year, it went on, it's going on this year, it's going to go on next year, hopefully, I mean, but, um, and I guess the legality part of it, as far as, you mean, because of their minutes, is that what you?
Their DOT minutes, not ours published. That's how I, I see it, I don't know.
Yeah, I understand. I guess, I'm just looking for a progress report, though, that's, I'm not necessarily holding anybody to the-
And, and that would be the progress report, their minutes.
Yeah, I guess you're probably right, but, um-
Just asking.
Yeah, I guess.
Maybe the DOT could send us an email and, with the weekly update.
Just have them-
You know what, I'll take care of that, I'll do that, I'll take care of that.
Just ask for a summary of, of the meeting.
I'll do it.
Yeah, that way it's coming right from them and-
That's what they send out, like, round at, their updates.
Yep. Okay, uh, we need to have a motion on this, we do, we need a roll call vote.
Smith.
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Craig?
It's Rodney for a vote.
My names are must-.
I'll vote aye, too. Moving on to five point three, consider payment request number eleven from HK Solutions for bid number twenty-twenty-four dash oh eight sewer main lining in the amount of eighty-three, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents. Dennis?
Thank you, this is for the project they started last year, they've just started it again, and it's progress payment for that, recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay, any questions or comments for Dennis? Roll call, vote, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Luke? Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. We're going to move into a work session now, and we-